Okay, this meeting is being recorded. We're going to get started. Hi, my name is M.J. Adams. I'm the Director of Community and Economic Development for the City of Greenfield, and I am here with my staff member, Christian LaPlante, who serves as my grant program assistant. We also have some members in the audience here. We have several members on the Zoom call. The purpose of this public hearing tonight is actually threefold. We have a couple of things to accomplish, all related to the community development block grants that the City of Greenfield receives as a mini entitlement community. So I'm going to read the public hearing notice, and then we'll launch into things. Please keep yourself on mute until we've called on you to speak. And any other? Oh, and I also want to say that I'm presenting some information tonight. All of it is up on our website. You can see it there. If you have any difficulties getting that, please call my office and speak to Christian, and we'll make sure that we can get you hard copies. And you have until November 28th to submit written copy, written comments after this meeting. So you can comment during the meeting tonight, or you have until the 28th to submit something in writing to the office. The City of Greenfield will hold a public hearing on Thursday, November 17th, 2022, at 5:00 p.m. in the City Hall Meeting Room, 14 Court Square, Greenfield, with a remote Zoom option, hybrid meeting. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public comment on the city's community development block grant activities, including accept input on Greenfield's community development strategy and priority projects, a draft of which is on our website, for the city's 2022 mini entitlement program application. We'll also, as a second item, we'll also update you on grant implementation of activities that we have underway from previous mini entitlement grants that are in the works. And then we'll also discuss a program amendment to our 2020 grant year to add housing rehabilitation as an activity, and to transfer some uncommitted social services funding to housing rehab activities. So what I'll do is I'll first give some, a little background on the community development block grant program. These are federally sourced funds that are distributed to communities in Massachusetts from the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Greenfield is one of 11 small cities that is considered a mini entitlement community. And what that means is that we are guaranteed an allocation of funds every year, usually about $825,000 a year. And with that, our primary mission is to undertake activities that benefit the low and moderate income community in our, in the City of Greenfield, and/or work to eliminate slum and blight. Those are the two national objectives that we need to attend to when we use these funds. There's a whole, there's a wide variety of eligible activities. I'm happy to share that list. It's a, it's a three-page document. There's, there's a lot of flexibility with the community development block grant. Historically, the city has used it fairly extensively for housing rehabilitation programs, to support social services, to undertake some commercial improvement activity, and also to do some infrastructure work. The city has been administering the mini entitlement funds since 2008, and to date, we have received over $12,275,938, which we've allocated among these different activities that I already mentioned. One of the, one of the first things when we're preparing to submit a grant to the state. So every year where we administer, we submit the grant, every year, the next application is due in early March. Usually about three months before the grant is due, we have to prepare something called a community development strategy. And essentially, that is a brief summary of what the city is doing. What are our goals? What is, what are our planning strategies? What are the things that we're focusing on? And if you have the chance to go online and take a look at our community development strategy, it has been posted. And it talks a little, gives a little bit of a description of the community. And then we talk very specifically about our priorities. And the priorities that we've identified is we want to create a 21st century downtown. And we hope to do that by strengthening and diversifying the downtown business community, creating a sense of place, upgrading public facilities, upgrade, create, create new and upgrade existing housing, and expand and upgrade municipal facilities. Our second priority is to expand and diversify the tax base. And that is, we're focusing on that by trying to expand the supply of industrial zone land, and also to support the redevelopment of underutilized properties, largely in our downtown, but also around the fringes also. We're also looking to expand, update, and harden the city's infrastructure to reduce our vulnerability and to impact, to adjust to the impact of climate change. And we're also looking to enhance the quality of life for current and future residents of Greenfield and the region, because we know we serve the county's hub. We're the county's civic service commercial center. And with the community development block grants, we particularly focus on those neighborhoods or those communities that are lower moderate income households. And you can see, if you have the chance to read through the community development strategy, you'll also see a list of our priorities, projects that we're working on, and potential funding sources for those projects. So does anybody have any questions of any of that? And if nobody has any, well, we'll do the questions first, and then if people want to comment on anything within the community development strategy, we're happy to accept that here. I also will share with you that we can also receive it in a written format. You might wonder what happens, what happens when we get all these comments? The comments become part of the package that we submit to the state when we submit our community development block grant application in March. And like I said, it's our opportunity, it's your opportunity to have some comment on what we're working on and the priorities that the city has established as we want to look to expend these funds. So are there any questions out there first?
Hey, I just, I don't know if this works because we're hybrid in person and online, but I just wondered if you could, when, on my screen, what I see is just a teeny little box with you. And, and I just wonder if you could take down what's on the screen and put, you know, then I can do speaker view. Oh, that's beautiful. Now I can see you, and I can see who's in the room. Thank you so much.
That was your only question, Judith?
At the moment. Thank you.
All right. Anyone here in the room have any questions? And I just want to remind folks who have come in, if you could sign in and if you'd like to speak, to put your name on the other sheet also, please. All right. Not seeing any questions. Go for them.
Oh, I have one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Judith.
Do you have an agenda for tonight?
It's essentially, it's essentially what was in the public hearing notice. That's our agenda.
Yeah, very good.
And that's available online?
Yeah, I saw it. Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Yes, you can do the chat too. All right. All right, seeing that nobody seems to have any questions, am I right about that? All right, I will now open the floor for comment. And I'm going to hand it over to Christian. He's going to run the comment piece.
All right. So we can start with virtual. Judith, you have your hand raised, but you want to comment on this section?
I was going to comment on the economic opportunity part of the strategy, if that's acceptable. I don't know if this is the right time.
Yep. Yes, this is, comment on any part of the, the strategy. The strategy is the three-page document, the narrative that was online, and then the, the list of projects that were also attached there. I think yesterday, set it up yesterday? Yesterday.
Yeah. Okay, so I just, first of all, I wanted to say thank you to the town for your support of the, in the past, CBDG, C-B-D-G, funding for the literacy project, and that we're right here downtown and diagonally across from the town hall, and that we are definitely a source of providing economic opportunity for adults in Greenfield, and that we are, you know, you have this part of your strategy, improve access to education. We all know that education is the single thing that helps people to be able to earn a better and family sustaining income. So the Literacy Project, in case folks don't know, is a GED program, helping people who didn't graduate from high school to get their high school diploma and move on to better jobs, to community college and job training programs. So we're very grateful for the past support of the City of Greenfield. And I would say that the education is the on-ramp to the road out of poverty. So it's a very important part of the family sustaining economic opportunity part of the, of the strategy. So thank you.
And Judith, just so everyone is aware of this, you, Literacy Project has received funding for two consecutive years. The first year you had $10,000, and last year was $15,000, correct?
I think that's right, yeah.
Great.
And we're, we very, very much appreciate it. And we have about 50, well, 50 students enrolled. And over the course of the year, of course, it'll be more than that because we have what we call rolling enrollment. So people get ready to take the GED or the High School Equivalency Test, also known as the HISA, and, and then go on. And many of our students go on to Greenfield Community College, which we are very proud of. And I had a student, I had asked Christian if I could bring a student, and I had a student, but I see that he is not in the audience. So I think I will continue. Thank you very much.
And Judith, I do want to share, if you have students, they can make comments all the way until we close the, the public hearing tonight. They can make that in person. And then they also have the opportunity to submit any sort of written comments to our office by November 28th.
Oh, great. Oh, good. Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
All right, next on the Zoom is Peg.
Hello. I think M.J. already knows this, but I'd like to have it be part of the record that I'm in favor of the housing aspects, in particular, the expansion of the Well Street Shelter to include the permanent housing. It sounds like a fabulous project. We're all very excited about that. And if you'd also like a, a written statement from Greene in Greenfield, I bet you we can get you that too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the only other person with their hand raised on the Zoom is Amy Clark.
Hi, I'm speaking on behalf of the Interfaith Council of Franklin County Housing Assistance Committee, which has been existent, in existence probably 10 or 12 years. I don't think I've ever seen the collaboration among agencies as close as it was this year. Meetings all year long, a lot of working together, a lot of talking about the need, and yet the need is still greater than ever right now. And I think probably the most urgent need facing our community this winter is emergency shelter. And yet, the long-term solution for that is housing. So I would strongly urge you to put as, as much of your funding towards some of these exciting housing opportunities that are coming up, both at the Well Street Shelter and at Wilson's, if this is appropriate for that. Very exciting, very needed housing at all levels for people of all means to make this town grow. And I would strongly urge you to, to put as much funding as possible towards housing.
Thank you.
All right. And then Nancy, I see you have your hand raised, but I'm going to go to the people that are in person and write their names down here first. So first is Eddie?
Edie.
Edie.
Would you like to come and sit at the table?
Yes, sit at the table so that Mike can pick you up.
I'm Edie Heineman, 41 Garfield Street. I'm here specifically to support the, the enhanced shelter project on Well Street. I listened to some of the proposal and the integration of services, and moving from simply shelter to transitional housing is a fantastic idea. And I would encourage as much funds as possible from this particular grant to be used for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Tom Gurino.
Well, I was waiting for the final part of the agenda, but I do want to make a couple of comments. Oh, it's the people that can't hear me that said no one ever. I just wanted to make a couple of general comments. I concur that as much as you can put into the housing initiatives are important, but the other economic development and community development activities that the city undertakes helps housing too. So I think everything, if people have a house, but they can't go to a job, there's no job for them, then there's, it's kind of all kind of intertwined, and I think we need to, to look at that. The other thing I wanted to just say, because I've been in the field for a long time, there are a lot of towns this size that don't have community development offices. And the work that you can see happening in Greenfield daily, from different pools of money and different departments, but it all ties in. The work that this community development office does is outstanding, given that there's two people. And the amount of work that they are able to put out, and I'm not blowing any smoke here, I've done this as, as, for, for a living. It's quite astounding, the amount of output that two people are able to give the City of Greenfield. And I, I think that should be recognized beyond what the meat and potatoes is of the plan. And I just wanted to make that statement, and I will come back as it relates to the other thing.
Thank you.
All right, next is Alyssa LaRose.
Hey, everyone. Alyssa LaRose, 10 Burke Street, and I'm here on behalf of Rural Development, Inc. and the Franklin County Regional Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And on, here also on behalf of Clinical and Support Options. So I just wanted to thank M.J. and the city for putting the Well Street project on the list of priorities. As M.J. knows, and as I think some of you know, the state, you know, even though the bulk of the money for this project is hopefully coming from different state, federal sources outside of the town's money, DHCd really does want to see a local commitment to show support for projects. So we really appreciate the city, you know, working to get us some CDBG funds for the project, as well as we will be applying for CPA. And so it's really a key part of the process is, is, you know, having that, that local commitment for this project. And also really appreciate all the support tonight from folks online and in the room for the project. We're really excited to be moving forward, hopefully hearing more news in the next month or two on, on funding. But we're pretty hopeful. We think it's going to happen, so very excited. So anyways, just wanted to say thank you.
All right. And now back to the virtual, Nancy.
Hello, Nancy Hazard, 30 Spring Terrace, and everyone who's spoken already. I couldn't agree more with everything. I am so excited about the Well Street project. It's what we've been dreaming about. So not only the extra beds and the housing, but also the day-use facility, and just the, the design that has a big outdoor courtyard kind of space. It just, the whole, thinking the whole thing through, it's just, I'm so impressed. And I definitely would like CDBG funds go to that project as much as possible this year. It's sort of a one-time thing. And I couldn't agree more with Tom about the amazing community development office. So thanks to all those people.
Thank you.
And then the last person with their hand raised is Ginny Disorga. If anyone else on Zoom wants to speak right now, they should also raise their hand.
Hi, thank you. I echo much of what everyone else said. Kudos to all of you. You're doing a fabulous job. I was delighted to hear about Wells Street, and also what's going to be happening in Wilson's with housing. And two things, I support a significant amount of this money going towards the housing. It's near and dear to my heart. And I also, as far as infrastructure goes, M.J., you all know how disability access feels about the sidewalks in town. This is actually a civil right that everybody with a mobility issue is able to manage on safe sidewalks. So housing first, and as far as the infrastructure part, I'd love to see a chunk of money being put towards our sidewalks because I can't remember how many miles of sidewalks we have, but this is the main method that many people use to stay healthy. And we have a lot of people with disabilities living downtown, and the sidewalks are, in some cases, are inaccessible. So thank you so much for all you do, and kudos again for all this grant money.
All right, so that's everyone that has their hand raised right now. So this is, if there's anyone else that wants to make a comment on the community development strategy, I see Jean Wall. You just joined the meeting. If you wanted to raise your hand and comment, do that now. If not, that's everyone on Zoom and everyone in person.
Okay, we're going to move on to agenda item number two, which is just really an update of what's going on with our existing programs. There's a number of activities that we're wrapping up on, on some, some older, 2018, 2019 grants, largely around some housing rehabilitation projects that have, that have not just community development block grant, but also what's called the Gateway Housing Rehabilitation Funds, which allow for a much deeper rehabilitation of a property to happen. We noticed that by the time properties get to us sometimes, that they are no longer just a substantive, they're no longer, no longer moderate rehab, they're more substantial rehab, and it costs more than we can allocate with CDBG. So we were able to receive some funding in February 2020 to be able to put an additional $75,000 per project into our housing rehab multifamily projects so that they could do a deeper dive on rehab. And we have two projects that were funded clearly because of some challenges starting up the Gateway Funding Program from the state and the challenges with COVID and the interruption in supply chain issues. It has taken us longer than we anticipated to see these projects to their end, but they're, one is, one is complete, and one will be complete early next year. And so those are two of the activities that are still in the works. All the other, the other thing that's still in the works prior to your community development block grant is our planning activity. That is the Downtown Revitalization Plan Update. I'll be really candid with you. I was waiting until the Wilson's news was out in public so that we could actually have a much more meaningful discussion about the future of our downtown. I'll also share with you today that the Armory closed yesterday, and there's a new, new owner of the Armory who is a local, local person who already owns property in Greenfield. So we have someone who's coming to take one of our challenging buildings in the downtown, or our underutilized buildings in the downtown. And we don't know what the plans are with that yet, but there's a number of things that the Wilson's redevelopment, the Armory purchase, and we're, we're issuing an RFP for the First National Bank. Clearly, you know, we're almost done with the library. We're, we just started on the fire station. The skateboard park is in the works, and we're planning to do the Main Street. So this is a great time to step in and to sort of pull all the different pieces together, get a clear plan that everyone is aware of and can, can feel like they're part of the process because we're really creating a 21st century downtown for the city and for the region. The details of the different grant years and what we've done and where we are with things is in the publication, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Anyone might tap on that?
So it looks like there's one person that has their hand raised on Zoom. Stephanie Du Close.
Stephanie, you can unmute and ask your question.
You're muted. I don't know if I can force unmute you or something, but...
Hi, I'm so sorry. I couldn't figure out how to do this on my phone. I'm like trying so hard to get the, the unmute button up. I was like, where the heck is it on this thing? I did have a question about whether or not we will get detailed information about how much, how much money was allocated to each individual project and how those decisions were made?
Are you talking about the previous years?
Well, I mean, I mean, you're talking about the Well Street project, Wilson Street, I mean, the Wilson's project, Armory, sidewalks. I'm just wondering if, when we'll get the information about what specifically was allocated to which individual project? And is there public information as to where you can apply for individual housing rehabilitation grants?
The answer is, in terms of the decision-making about what our March grant application will look like, we will be putting that information together. We will, we actually hold another public hearing and present that probably in January, when we know the numbers, that will have the detail about what the projects are, what the grant funds we're looking to allocate to that specific project is. And, and then that goes into the grant application. The issue that's sort of, sort of the biggest sort of wide-open question right now is for our social services that we put, that we fund with our grant. We have a request for proposal that is out in the community right now to the Social Service Network. And proposals are due December 16th. Yep. And once those proposals come in, there's an internal review committee, and then we make recommendations to the mayor, and it's decided what goes into the grant at that point. And like I said, the, the full grant of, the full list of grant projects that we're, and the amount that we're looking to put towards each project will be offered up at a public hearing in January, sometime in January. I don't have the exact date, but usually we'll try to do it around the end of January. And then once that is done, once the public hearing is held, then we do the final preparation of the grant, which is submitted in March. And then the grant funds typically become available in July, although because of some transition issues, those actually might become available a little earlier. But we should look for the activities to be starting up in July as a general rule of thumb.
One additional question. What, what is the total amount that you guys have to work with to allocate?
Sure, we have $825,000 per year. Because of COVID, they're actually combining two grant years, so they did not do the grant application, they didn't open the grant application this year. So what we're applying for in March is actually a two-years allocation, which would be $825,000 a year for two years. So 1.65 million is what we'll be able to submit a request on.
And are there restrictions of, like, what would be the matching portion coming from Greenfield? Or are these grants not like that?
They don't require any matching funds, no. If there are matching funds, it's helpful to make reference to it. But CDBG, CDBG funds can actually be used to match other grants that have matching requirements, as long as it's an eligible activity for CDBG. But CDBG funds typically do not require matching funds. What we have to show is that the fund, the project that we're planning to do is whole in terms of where we believe the funding will come from. So if CDBG is only paying for part of the project cost, then we have to identify what we believe the other funding sources are to make that project whole financially. Did I answer your question?
Yes, you did.
You also had asked an earlier question about how do you apply individually as a housing rehab, for housing rehab funds? You actually contact our office, you contact Christian, and he'll send you out a form that we have. We have not included housing rehab as an activity over the last couple of years. Housing rehab has been, is a particularly challenging activity to run. Housing rehab has been, is a particularly challenging activity to run. We are required frequently to do full let abatements in the properties, and that ends up sometimes costing more than we can allocate to the project. And it's that program, the housing rehab program, is directed to low and moderate income homeowners or property owners?
I'm more than qualified.
Feel free to go, and I'll share with you that we also have a target area where the money is targeted to those neighborhoods that are predominantly low and moderate income households, and those tends to be those around the downtown area.
Yeah, I live by the arch, so I've had a lot of foundational issues since the high-speed trade came in.
Why don't we go ahead, and why don't you contact Christian, and he'll get you the application, and you can start the one-on-one, okay?
Thank you so much.
Okay, great.
All right, looks like Jean Wall has their hand raised.
Yes, I wanted to find out about the houses that you have on your list of houses for rehab. What does that mean? I'm sorry if I missed an explanation earlier, I was at the fire station.
Meeting. Well, the houses that are under rehab, we have two projects, well, we had two, we had two projects, one's done, the one on Elm Street is done, and the one on Conway Street is underway. And so these are two properties that were in pretty rough shape. They were acquired by new owners, and they're being rehabbed and upgraded so that they'll be up to code and available for rent.
Okay, so the one on Conway Street, you gave money to it?
Yes, they are receiving grant money, yes. And in exchange for that grant money, they are obligated to lease those units up to income-eligible households for 15 years.
Were you aware that that property did not have a building permit during his construction on it?
He's had, we don't issue, we don't issue any payments out, Jean, until the, we see the building permit before we issue payments.
Okay, so you're working through Mark Snow on that property?
Mark Snow's the building inspector, he would be the one issuing the building permit, yes.
Okay, and how much is he getting for that one?
Jeez, I don't know off the top of my head. He's eligible for $80,000 in CDBG and $75,000 in Gateways money. So is that 155?
Yeah.
155. Thank you.
All right, someone else had their hand raised, but I don't see anyone else with their hand raised now. Is anyone in here that would like to speak on this?
I have a question, probably a stupid question. Christian sent out a couple weeks ago the notice of the grant for the social service agencies. Silly question, I should have asked you this afternoon, is the housing authority considered a social agency? Okay, all right, I have an idea.
Not a silly question.
Yeah. I didn't know since we were quasi-municipal.
No, you were very eligible, yes.
Thank you.
All right, that looks like it is everyone at the moment.
Okay, so we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number Three, and that is to have a discussion about adding the housing rehab activity to our CDBG 2020 grant. That is not an existing activity in the 2020 grant right now. I have some funds that were allocated to social services for the Council on Aging. The Council on Aging, the Senior Center turned those back to us, they decided not to run that program. So we have $25,000 that is uncommitted and unexpended in the 2020 grant program. We have also been in conversation with Greenfield Housing Associates, Inc. Tom Gurino is the executive director of that. He has a property that is in need of some funding assistance, and we've been looking to see if we could scratch together some funds to be able to assist in one of his projects, one of his properties. It's a four-unit home that needs some foundation work. So in order to add an activity to an existing grant that doesn't have an activity, a specific activity, I have to have a conversation in a public hearing with the community to get comment on our recommendation that we take the $25,000 that is not being used for the social services with the Senior Center and make that available through the housing rehab program to this project. Tom, do you want to speak to it at all?
Sure. Thank you. This is a home on Deerfield Street, 317, 319 Deerfield Street, that the city has put in some rehab money in the past. Over the past couple of years, specifically last summer, with all of the rain and the moisture and all of the things, we ran into a terrible mold problem down at that property where I had to relocate tenant for several days while we did some abatement. The GHAI spent a lot of money of its own, so it's not like, to do other rehab on the property, but also this led, this mold abatement project, and we got to be very extensive. The problem we have in that area, it's down by the river, okay? It's right across from the, from the river. It's at the bottom of the hill, you know, the bank for Washington Street, I think it is, backs up against, against that, and the cellar is wet, and we have done all the mitigation that we know how to do without getting into what we are requesting the city to look at as well. The other thing that, just so folks know, we did better the property, there was a home behind there that had, there had been some money put into that too, but it was determined that we couldn't make a two-family out of it, the zoning laws, we were going to tear it down and put up another two, two units or two one-bedrooms. We didn't fit the footprint to be able to do that there, so we tore the building down. It was going to be too extensive to try to rehab for a single-family home, and we wouldn't get a return, there wouldn't be, you know, good rental. So we've, we really want to finish up this particular project, I think, once we get the cement in the cellar and the walls blown with foam insulation to keep the dryness up. We've taken, we've done a lot of work with the heating system there to be sure there's no air voids where bad air, if you will, can get up into the apartments. That was part of the problem. It's probably more detail than you need, but we have done a lot of work, and we just need a little bit more to finish it off.
All right, does anyone else that's here in person have a comment on this section?
I just want to share with people that GHAI is a nonprofit organization, nonprofit organization that's affiliated with the Greenfield Housing Authority, and Tom is the executive director of both, yes.
Because I'm not working for two boards and any plums.
And first, please.
Hello, hi, good evening. Sorry for coming in late, so I'm just trying to catch up where everybody else was. I just wanted to ask a simple question. Where can I find more information about the 2020 grant? Would that be?
We had information online, but if there's anything specific you want to know about?
I would just like to go more into detail, just to see as far as, I know you said it's under social services, but as far as what kind of social services?
Were funded with the 2020? Sure, we can give you that information, I can give that to you right now.
Okay.
There are 2020, we funded the food pantry in the amount of $45,000, and we also provided $8,000 to the Congregate Meals through the Council on Aging with Life Path, and we allocated $10,000 to the Literacy Project that year. And then we also had, the $25,000 was also available to the Council on Aging for, it was called a Council on Aging Outreach Worker, and that is the one that the Senior Center Director returned to us.
Thank you.
Okay.
Nancy, has your hand raised?
Yeah, I had a question for Tom or for anybody. So how much, to finish this project, how much would it, will it cost? And how much does the $25,000, how much would the $25,000 cover?
The city's rehab specialist did the specifications on the work that needed to be done. We had gotten an initial quote, and I told MJ when I got it, it was stupid money, it was very expensive, and it wouldn't have been worthwhile to do the work. The estimate that the rehab specialist has come up with is about $26,000 plus or minus?
That was about $34,000.
I thought it came, all right, maybe it is, I thought it was 28, but it's 30-plus to finish it off, but that will complete, that will complete it, it won't need anything else. We've actually also moved all the gutters around so nothing's going near the house, and done all kinds of other grading when we tore the other house down.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, I don't see any other hands raised, I don't, oh, Nancy, do you want to continue?
You have to unmute yourself, Nancy, yeah.
So I assume that the difference between the 25 and the 30, whatever, that that's something that the housing authority or that other would be?
GHAI.
Yeah, we'll make up, we'll put in whatever the difference is, we'll make up, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none and seeing none? I'm going to close this hearing. And I'm just reminding you, thank you for coming tonight, I want to express my appreciation. I also want to share with you that the Sustainable Greenfield Implementation Committee serves as the Citizens Advisory Board for the Community Development Block Grant on a non-fundamental basis. On a quarterly basis, they receive updates of what we're up to and where we are with our different grants, and they frequently host our public hearings, but they've been, it's been a little chaotic in terms of scheduling meetings with the holidays, so we're doing the public hearing without them tonight, but they are, so in the interim, if you have any questions during the year, best place is either you can contact us at our office, or you're welcome to come on a quarterly basis to the, and hear the update at the Sustainable Greenfield Implementation Committee. And reminder, you have until November 28th, if you wake up in the middle of the night and you have more intelligent, brilliant things to add, feel free to write them down and get them to Christian before the close of business on November 28th. Thank you. Good night, we're going to close this hearing. Thanks, MJ. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, MJ, and Christian.
Thank you so much.